So, meeting for today, Tuesday, July 9th, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing afterwards for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for the grace of being able to gather along with our officials and leaders, oh God, of the town of Maryville. We pray that you would give them the wisdom and the grace that is needed to allow order, dignity, oh God, and excellence to be within our town. We pray for those who are in positions of services, our departments, fire department, police department. We pray for our chiefs, Lord, that you would keep them protected, our officers protected. Bless this group that they may continue to lead in the development of this town and give them the wisdom and unity and camaraderie that's necessary for success. Bless our children who are out for school and keep them safe, Lord, and protect families that are traveling here and there. And we ask these prayers in Jesus' name. And we all say it. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Mr. January, would you please call the roll call?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Hannah Edwards.
Here.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Yuzak.
Present.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Present.
President Bella.
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. Thank you. Moving on tonight to public hearings. Mr. Svetnov, we have item A there.
Yes, item A is a public hearing. I reviewed the proof of publication regarding the public hearing. All seems to be in order and we're ready to proceed at this time.
Joe, can you give us just a brief or Michael, a brief explanation of this resolution Is a waiver of noncompliance for Quality Pasta.
Mr. Griffin, please go ahead.
I'm happy to yield to you, Mr. Svetnov.
At this time, Mr. President, it's a resolution that was designed to correct an error. What happened is Quality Pasta did not file timely their CF1 for their tax abatement. So at this time, we're filing a resolution. We're passing or considering a resolution tonight that will allow them to go ahead and correct that error with the Lake County Auditor and Assessor's Office. They need the resolution as an official action of the town government to correct this error right now.
Is there any public comment regarding this resolution 24-16? Mr. Svetnov, would you go to the next one, please? Resolution 24-17.
Yes, this is another, what would be correction of error, having to do with the CF1 for another... The name escapes me right now. Is this...
This is Web Hyundai.
This is Web Hyundai. So Web Hyundai has made the same mistake that Quality Pasta made in terms of filing their CF1 on time. This gives them the opportunity to go ahead and we're going to waive the time limit and they'll have an opportunity to go ahead and correct this CF1 mistake and all should be in order from then on.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this resolution 24-17? These will both be heard later tonight on the agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda tonight, we have the council payable register voucher approval for July 9th, the AP register summary for ARP purchases for June 9th, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes of July 25th. We also have a request for special rates and user charges modifications to support the use of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mike Anderson Event Center for the Salvation Army, and a request of waiver of previous user charges for uses of the basketball court at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center by the Equanis School.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzak for approval of the consent agenda, open for comment. Mr. January, we do have two ARP voucher summaries here. The first one we got on Friday was for $30,005.28. Tonight's one at our place setting is $26,543.31. I believe that was a Robinson Engineering change of figure. Is that correct?
Correct, sir. We called it today and made the correction and we have the updated...
So, councilors, please use the one that was at your place setting tonight. There's two pages on it. The difference is vendor number 423. It's Robinson Engineering and the amount should be $42.63 and zero cents. Any other discussion on the motions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, budget and finance, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We are in budget season, so we have meetings for our budget coming up the next couple of months. And that's all.
Thank you. Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, I know that Michael has an ordinance that he wants to have the committee review. Joe, I don't know if there are any other pending from Chief Costa or from Chief Yurga. I think we took care of all of those, did we not?
Yes, we retired all the...
All right, so I think it's just the ordinances, Mr. Griffin, that you might have that. Let me know when you're ready and I'll call a committee meeting, preferably on a Tuesday night before the planning commission. That's a hint, Michael.
I'm taking your hints.
Mr. Griffin, could you update us on the codification of these ordinances so that the police department can move forward?
Mr. President, I thank you for that. As you know, I've tried to help in the transition, Mr. January as clerk treasurer, in his role as clerk of the legislative body. We had an agreement with our codifier that's online that's from 1982. In fact, the clerk treasurer, Merle Cook, the very first one was a signatory to that. We thought that the prices for updating that were excessive. So, I tried to find out if we could get something in the way of a flat fee. We did get something. We agreed it is a much better deal. I did tender that over to him. I applied for a purchase order so he knows where we've got the account identified for it. So I did send him an email tonight asking if he would take care of making sure that that got tendered over to Civic Plus, which is the larger umbrella organization for municode. And then my expectation is that the clerk treasurer and his staff will then assume the recodification. The timetable, I hope, is as quick as they get their check. My sense is they'll move quickly on... Because we're backlog, there are things from 2020 that they showed in the list that Mr. January received from them about it. So my expectation is, once that's processed, they'll be moving quickly on that. But for future timetables, I'm going to ask the chief to contact Mr. January and his staff. I just wanted to get that off the ground and now that's being placed in his role as clerk of the legislative body. And I do thank the council for asking.
Eric, is the payment being taken care of on that?
Certainly is. I sent you the email, you didn't get it properly. But we're making it a priority. We'll have that purchase order processed right away. Because it's important, the chief can't do his job without this stuff being published.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
No.
Mrs. Yuzak, street department.
Oh, the street department. Thank you. I called Steve and he checked out a few of the streets for branches, which I had reported. And then our speed bumps, they came in and they started on Tany Place in the 4th Ward. And Steve is still working with Chapel Hill on the different requests that they wanted stop signs, et cetera, et cetera. And that's it for now.
I have something, Ms. Moore.
Ms. Hardaway.
Oh, Mr. President. The speed bump on Grant Place, has that been placed?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Yuzak.
Oh, you're welcome.
Council President.
There's only a few that have gone up, but they're working on it.
Yeah, they're working on them.
Yeah.
Steve, I still noticed that residents not realizing we're not picking up branches any longer, still trim trees and put a large stack of branches at the curb side. Do we just handle those as a one-off basis and call your office?
So, we've run a chipper crew all year. We started it last year with the demand of the residents. That's what we do. We haven't, we didn't run one last week because of the preparation for the parade. So things have kind of piled up. We started a chipper crew back out yesterday. And tomorrow, we're going to have two chipper crews out. But it's an ongoing thing and...
These are mostly from storm damage or...
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah. So we'll be, actually, I think we're going to have two backhoes picking up the bigger piles tomorrow too.
Oh, and don't forget Hendrick Street.
We'll get over there.
Okay. There's quite a few out there.
We'll get, yeah. With the prep for the parade, we just, we didn't run a chipper crew at all last week.
All right, I'll send you a list of a couple of addresses then, Steve. Thank you. Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We met with the committee to work on the gateway signs on last Monday and we'll meet again on this upcoming Monday. We had some renovations done to the drawings, so we're waiting to get those back next Monday. So just more to come, but we're working on it very diligently. Every two weeks, we have a meeting.
Do we have any cost estimates yet? I want those to run.
Not yet. Nope.
When you get those, get them over to Mr. Pettit, please.
Oh, absolutely. We've already discussed that in our meetings.
Very good. Thank you.
That RDC money tree back there is... That's okay. It's flush. Very flush.
Environmental affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Personnel policy and employee benefits, Ms. Hardaway.
We have been having interviews lately for the park, for the community center, site supervisor, as well as event coordinators. I believe those interviews went well today, so look forward to having some new employees join the staff. Street Department, they had a very good turnout of applicants. They had 12 interviews. Don't know how many applications were submitted, but they had the opportunity to interview 12 individuals. So we will be onboarding some new employees into the street department as well. So we're looking like we're filling positions. We do still have a couple openings. Am I right, Lisa, at the community center? Are we good?
Yes, no. I mean, if we look into a cleaning crew to come in overnight, that could stop some of the applications for the janitorial crew. But it never hurts to have a couple more in case there's vacancies being used. Other than that, I think we're pretty good.
Okay. All right, that is all for the personnel. Long title. That committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Public safety, Councilor Hardaway.
As far as public safety, just want to kudos to the police and fire on the parade and how that was handled. If there are any additional comments on public safety, I will defer those to Chief Nusis during his report.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Bella.
Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. You mentioned the public hearing that we just conducted. There'll be two resolutions to address a couple of tax abatement issues later on the agenda.
Thank you. Parks, Recreation, and Community Center Committee, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, we'll have a meeting the 3rd, the 4th Thursday of the month. One of the things we will be addressing, and I'll let Lisa give you an update on the center later, is the HVAC system. Mr. Griffin had the energy analysis done by NIPSCO. They looked at the lights, but they didn't look at the HVAC system, which is probably more important. They're both important because we pay high bills out there. So we're trying to address that issue of utility costs at the center. So at our next committee meeting, we'll be diving into that again. Michael, did I miss anything?
Mr. President, I don't believe you have. Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I don't believe you have.
That's all for now.
Thank you. Utility liaison, Ms. Chandler Felton.
Actually, no report this time, President Bella, but I'm in the process of speaking with Ms. Barber so that we can go ahead and have a meeting and be able to address some of those issues that Mr. Pettit has mentioned.
And she's with NIPSCO, right?
Yes, she is.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to special committees, abandoned and blighted properties, Ms. Hayes Edwards.
Nothing to report at this time.
How about the semi-quintcentennial committee?
You're so good.
Nothing to report at this time, Mr. President.
Special Town Projects, I know you have reports, Mrs. Neal.
Yes, I do.
The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, President Bella. We have just completed two months of a lot of work, starting with our Juneteenth celebration, followed by our 4th of July fireworks and our 4th of July parade. So, first of all, I want to thank the committee, and it's a lot of people. I can't even begin to just call everybody's name. But I want to thank the committees that I have been afforded the opportunity to work with. They have been a great pleasure and a great asset and a great help. I don't know if the town realizes how much time is volunteered by citizens and our town workers to pull off such phenomenal events that we've been able to do. So with that being said, one of the things, me personally being a council person, I wanted to do was to heavily increase community activity, to get the citizens more active in knowing what our town is doing and just becoming active and just participating in all of our events. And so I had Chad ask for some data from the Facebook page just to see the activity and to see how many of our residents are actually reading the activity, how many residents are actually sharing the activity, just to see that we're getting the word around. And so this is just some of the great news that he sent to me today. And this is probably with our 4th of July. So leading up to the 4th of July, our posts for our events combined reached 22,315 Facebook accounts. After the fireworks show and the parade and the showcasing took place, that number reached well over 41,000 Facebook accounts. So we know our residents are seeing what's going on and they're participating, and I'm really, really proud of that. We did something very new this year with our 4th of July parade, and that was to use a QR code for voting, once again, to allow the community to be able to vote who they liked in the parade. Whoever they saw, they had the opportunity to vote. It was not the committee voting or we picked random people to vote. We let our citizens vote on who they liked. And we did receive 1,500 votes during the parade. It rained a little bit, but we still had a fantastic parade. We did have a few organizations didn't show. We hit bumps and bruises, but the one thing I can tell you about this committee, we overcame every bump and bruise that we encountered. We did have three winners from the 4th of July parade. The first place winner went to 107.3 VIP. They received 338 votes. Our second place winner went to 219 Riot and Wranglers. They received 252 votes. And our third place winner went to one of our new town, they just opened up here in Maryville, Danny the Dog groomer. 213 votes. I don't know if you guys saw, he did have the full-size poodles. They were colored and decorated and a bunch of other things. So that was really, really spectacular. And then also, with that parade, we did get, I did receive a very nice email, so I just wanted to just throw out a couple of hits in this email that came through, just thanking people that did help. When I tell you guys, I sit back and I just kind of throw hints, throw ideas, yes, no, no, we can't do that, yes, we can do that, I don't know about that, and just kind of let them run away and just kind of take it and do it. They did an excellent job. So I just can't say how proud I am of just working with all of the committees on all of the projects. But Jay Farrell, he had a large, put his hand in it quite a bit as far as getting participants and making sure people were getting registered. He was constantly on it. In fact, he sent me an email and I said, does he realize he's emailing me? And this came from Brian. He wrote a very, very nice email, said, "Thank you to everybody." So thank you for doing this for me. He also included Mike Neal and his crew, how they came out and set up cone and barriers early in the morning, Deandre and Ed, who were absolutely rock stars, taking care of the interests. Apana King and her crew did a fabulous job with the parking lot and traffic control. And I don't know if you all know, that's a hard job. That traffic control is a difficult job when people were trying to tell people, this is where you can go and this is where you can't go. Nicole and Haley were amazing with keeping the traffic flow smooth with no gaps. AJ and Madison were equally great helping to manage the 67th Avenue side for the parade lineup. Barb Young, Donuts helped everyone with the sugar rush they needed for the event. The Maryville Police Department, of course, was there to get everything started and get the barriers up for us, so we thank you for doing that. Yeah, Lori and Chief Nusis, also the fire chiefs, they came, were out there, did a great job also. Lisa Roberts and Keisha Norman did an amazing job, and they were there to support wherever they needed. Keisha said, "What do you need me to do?" I said, "Just ride down the street and pass me these things," and that's exactly what she did. The little pinwheels we had. So that was nice. And then his final absolute, his final congratulations went out to Linda Rosa. He says she was the backbone of the event and the efforts that she put in to get everything handled. So I just wanted to thank all of those guys, but it was actually wonderful. The fireworks was good. We're going to make them a little longer next year. They were, well, they were very, very good. In addition to that, I want to personally thank from the Neal Family Nonprofit Organization, we had our football camp. Thank you to the council for allowing us to use a football field. We had about 120 children to participate. Seven of those were females. We serviced children from Maryville, Valparaiso, Highland, Gary, Hammond, Lake Station, Holbrook, Crown Point, La Porte, Chesterton, South Bend, West Lafayette, Griffin, Union Mills, Michigan City, Dyer, and East Chicago.
Wow.
So we were able to service all of those kids. We had another one of organizations here, D1 Training. They're fairly new, a little bit over a year old. They came out and participated and volunteered their time for free, so that was a really nice event. So we do thank you guys. And I have to tell you, I had a lot of parents who came from these other organizations. They were like, "When did you all get this? Where did this come from?" So they were very impressed with looking at our facility. And the football field was very, very nice, so they were very impressed with that. And to follow up, we did have our first bike club meeting. Maryville is going to get a bike club. Yes, we are going to be riding. You can paddle, you can walk, you can pull the kids in the wagon, the whole purpose of it is to get people moving and to get our community active. And long-term, we're looking into doing is hooking up with other bike clubs in other communities because our trails go into other towns and other cities. So that is a long term of it. So we had our first official bike club meeting to get that start, to get that going and up. So you'll get more information on that. Our next event that we'll be doing is the annual night out. Guys, we are busy. We are busy. Trunk-a-treat and Christmas tree lighting, so we are still meeting for all of those upcoming events that will be coming up with the town. So just stay tuned. And that concludes my report. Wait, let me look. Let me wait and make sure. That concludes my report.
Well, Mrs. Neal, I'm not going to give you a break. I'm going to ask you about the Lake County Solid Waste Management District next.
Yes, the Lake County Solid Waste Management. Next meeting is July 18th at 6:30, so I'll be attending that meeting. No, I will not be attending that meeting, but I will get the information from that meeting and give you updates on what they're doing for the fall. I'm pretty sure they're concluding all of their summer events that they had planned. And they had some really nice ones. And I know a couple of our residents, I know Chad told me he signed his kids up for the program there, and it was really, really nice. They did the edible garden. The edible waste field, yeah.
Nice. Anything else? Okay. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, we call it NERCy, and Ms. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President. The next meeting is not until September.
Oh, okay, that's right. I forgot. Stormwater Management Resources, our director is Matt Lake. Mr. Lake.
Thank you. Yeah, we're getting ready to put our Hickory Ridge Lake Regional Detention Project out for bid. This is a significant project, worthy, I think, of a groundbreaking ceremony to demonstrate how the town has been very proactive in helping out the residents. We also completed our fee study through Carl Sander, and we have a resolution that will be voted on at our next board meeting, as well as a public hearing. We've also prepared an ordinance that will go to the council thereafter for your consideration. Grimmer Construction will be remobilizing Monday for the project at 69th and Connecticut Street. We will also be presenting next Wednesday to the Little Cal Full Board and then ask for half the construction costs for that project. So we got a favorable recommendation from the advisory board. Now we're going to the full board. Once they vote, if they vote favorably, we'll get half the construction costs covered for that project. I also need to get with Councilman Pettit and Attorney Joe Svetnov with regards to 97 and Grand with regards to right-of-way acquisition. So I sent out some letters to the residents that own the agricultural land there. We just need some right-of-way there to do the project. We're shovel-ready, ready to go. We got our funding. We got our permitting. We're all set. So we just need to figure that part out and do it as quickly as we can. Also got with Steve, we're talking about the clean community signs, and I'm part of the sign committee. So I think since we get accolades for other things, we'll probably have signs separate from that, you know, and posts, you know, at various locations, gateway areas of the town, just demonstrating again that we're a tree city, we're an idymical, clean community, things of that nature, so that the public understands how proactive we are with regards to quality of life and the environment. Just to be aware, NIPSCO is doing line clearance work throughout the town. This is for the power lines with the trees. I gave them a lake permit to remove trees that are existing problems and future problems within the right-of-way. This is to make sure that that area is clear for reliable power. And so they are in town, they'll be working off of Maryville Road. That's the latest area that they're going to be working off of between 93rd and 87th. And our Hendrick Street project is almost at 100% design. We'll get that out to bid as soon as that is finalized. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Matt. Fire Territory Board, Councilors Neal and Hardaway.
You can go.
You can go ahead.
Oh, you can do it. Well, we just had a meeting, so I'll start and then Keisha can finish, I'll say.
We had a meeting today at 4:00, and part of the meeting was an executive session to discuss, to write, to correct, and oversight and paid overtime. So they have rectified the situation by agreeing to pay the overtime. There was no complaint brought against. They found this internally and decided to, with the help of their attorney, decided to rectify by paying said overtime. Don't know the number of hours that the overtime covered, but there was an amount of, can I say the amount?
Sure.
76, 76,000.
It was 36 per year, and it was going to be doubled, so it was like 72,000.
Yes. So it was 36,000 plus, so they were going to double it, so it was going to be 72,000 that they were going to pay in overtime. Each rate varied, each payout varies by individual based on the amount of overtime in which they work. We were explained in detail what that involved, and then we had our meeting. And our meeting was basically, we went over the cell tower agreement. So Eric Blackman came in and spoke about a 400,000 buyout that needed to be signed off by the attorney notarized. That was our meeting today.
Mr. Griffin, it brings back bad memories when we had the EMS overtime issues years ago. Would you mind getting with Chief Yurga and getting some more details on that and let's share those with Mr. Svetnov so that we make sure everything's in order?
I would not mind, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Michael. Anything else, ladies?
That concludes my report.
All right. Moving on to department reports tonight, Parks and Recreation, Lisa Roberts.
So we actually have Circle R coming out to check our HVAC system again. They are coming out sometime this week. I know with the holidays, they were backed up a little bit. So we're hoping to get everything rinsed off, new filters put in, hoping that solves some of the issues. Obviously, we'd like to be able to have control of the HVAC through the inter of the building, the interior of the building, but we can talk about that another time. We had a lot of graffiti at Stepford Park over the 4th of July holiday. We found out that there is a camera issue. We did have the gentleman come out. He looked at it. He thinks it might be a light pole issue, but he'll know more tomorrow because he's going to do an in-depth look through and find out what's going on because we do not have that camera, and we need that camera. So, and that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Police Department, Chief Newses.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna start off with, we had, we finished off June with approximately a little over 2,400 calls for service. We had a total of 525 traffic stops. Of those, probably about 200 tickets. We haven't gotten a total tally in. They've been really busy this past week. As summer is here, everybody's out and about, so officers are staying busy. Happy to announce that our new officers that we got the additional for are about halfway through their training. So as soon as we get them on the road, we can focus on getting that traffic unit ready. We're hoping to get it all situated by the end of the year and put it into place by the beginning of the year. We had a, I'm gonna, everybody's gonna get, keep hearing Officer Osborne's name, but Officer Osborne has been assigned to Lake County Task Force for their drug task force that they have. They've been focusing on some of the smaller stuff on, not smaller stuff, but the stuff that gets everybody's attention. And he's currently got a couple more cases that he's working on here in Maryville. So I'll have better locations that I can address next time, hoping. And he's really making an impact on a lot of these small, you know, people that are selling drugs, that are not, usually when you have a task force, they're focusing on the larger federal side of things. This is focusing on the smaller local, which are the ones that create a lot of drama, bring a lot of problems to the neighborhood, the small nickel-and-dimers, as we would refer to. They're the ones that bring all the drama themselves. So he's doing a really good job curbing that. The women's self-defense, we had planned one for August. Right now, we're trying to save it, because the officer that was going to be teaching it is being deployed. So we're trying to save it, and...
She's being deployed, Chief?
She is being deployed. She's still currently active, and she is being deployed. So she's gonna be gone for almost a year.
Oh, that's not good news. She's a good officer, yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a rough one. But we're still trying to save it. Last but not least, I would like to commend Robin Hudson from the Clerk Treasurer's Office. Today, she intercepted an email from somebody posing as one of our officers, asking to change their direct deposit, and that could have been catastrophic from a financial standpoint. So awesome job on her end for being vigilant and catching that. And so we would like to throw kudos to her. That's all I have.
That's good. Thank you, Chief. Moving on tonight to planning and building, Ms. Schein.
I don't have anything right now, Mr. President. Just a little later.
Okay. Mr. King, Street Department.
So we're very busy. So we've already talked about the branches. Our branch crew will be out until September, end of September, until we transfer over to our winter operations. We've also done a couple of small asphalt paving jobs. We've got done this year by our crews. We did some concrete work a week before last, and we're gonna, we'll hit back at that next week. We had to take a break to prep for the parade. Half of our department came in for the parade, set up barricades, things like that, and cleaned up the route after we were done. We had a great turnout. We had the, the fuel tanks have been removed from our site. That was done a week before last. Everything's been backfilled. We're kinda waiting on everything to settle out, and we'll do some restoration work and get that all taken care of. Other than that, I'm good. I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Steve. Clerk Treasurer, January, anything to add?
Yes, Mr. President. We are in receipt of another check from the Department of Revenue for the food and beverage tax, $71,947.51.
Keeps going up, doesn't it?
It went up, and part of that was due to some prior period collections. A small part, about $2,500 was, or $5,000 was collected from previous months. So that brings our grand total in food and beverage tax to $237,010.68. So it's moving in the right direction. We still have a long way to go, just in terms of making people aware that the town is collecting the beverage tax. Overall, the town, just in terms of a cash balance, we are in receipt of a lot of money from the real estate taxes this previous month. So our total revenue, total cash balance is $38,326,813.49, and that's divided between RDA, court, storm, and town. So it's not all the town of Maryville's money. But that is the report that I wanted to provide today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. January. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Vice President, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, you have my report before you. It speaks for itself. I do want to call your attention, though, to two things. One is in here and one is not. The first is in here. In concert with Councilwoman She, I still am getting used to that.
Okay.
We met with the administrative law judge, or the hearing officer, Mr. Richard Chikis, and we have a better understanding of that process. Towards that end, I'm gonna continue to have meetings. The chief has been extremely helpful. He's assigned a commander, at least temporarily, to help while we're transitioning, to get code enforcement, understand the duties. I'm gonna do a workshop on how to release a lien. I'm gonna actually do a release of a lien. I just got it signed off on by the Clerk Treasurer. And I actually delivered notices for the hearing that will take place on July 19th, on Friday yesterday. I, the chief had offered to have somebody come with me. I'm gonna take him up on that next time. Actually, I'm hopeful it won't be me delivering them, but I wanted to make sure that we made our timetable of 10 in advance. But we're gonna try to get a better understanding of that process. So I wanted to let you know that that wasn't left behind. And I feel so bad for Councilor She. Not, shouldn't. She's a great counselor. She's got an important position that she holds in the community. But every time you raise a sesquicentennial committee to her, I feel like she's embarrassed. Firstly, it means the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. That is a big deal. It's like the bicentennial, only with 50 more years. That's one. Two, we just got notice from the National Archives. They now have an actual logo for it, and I'm gonna send for the materials, so we can have just a little meeting ourselves to figure out about planning. We've already traded emails about ideas about maybe reading sections of the Declaration, or maybe reading perhaps the "I Have a Dream," it's commonly called the "I Have a Dream" speech, but it was a speech given for the large marching gathering at the Washington Memorial and the Lincoln Memorial by the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, which references that. There's readings that we can do. There's a lot of things. We're just a little early in that. So I wanted to do that for you, Madam Councilwoman, because I know you're working on it, and it makes you laugh, and I just wanted to be helpful.
Thank you.
You do have my report before you. Unless you have questions...
At least she laughs because I finally pronounced it correctly. That's what she's smiling about.
And I will make, I'll be seated unless there's a question for me.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Griffin, Mr. Pettit.
If we could go back to council affairs, and I apologize, Michael gave me this, but I need to make a motion. I move the matter of Resolution 24-20 be added to the agenda pursuant to MCC Section 2-57. Michael has given us this resolution at our place. I hope everyone has a copy of it, and we can take that up later on. That is my motion, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak, that on tonight's agenda, we add Resolution 24-20. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing on, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favors. We will add that to the agenda, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
Speaking of general orders, moving on tonight, we have no first reading ordinances and no second reading ordinances. So we'll move right to resolutions. Resolution 24-16. It's a resolution of Town Member regarding the waiver of non-compliance. This was for Quality Post. We talked about it earlier in the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit for approval of Resolution 24-16, excuse me, the second by Mrs. Yuzlak. Questions or comments on it? Anything to add to this, Mr. Pettit?
No. I think Joe covered it.
Very well. Joe, it's a resolution. I know a voice vote suffices. Do you want a roll call on this?
Roll call, please.
Mr. January, would you mind?
Yes, Mr. President. And for clarification, before I do that, Mr. President, if you would entertain me, CF1, could we please clarify what that is for the public?
Sure.
That's the tax abatement form that's necessary to be turned in to the Lake County Auditor and Assessor on an annual basis.
When they file a tax abatement petition, they submit an SB1, which is a statement of benefits, which shows how many jobs they're creating, their payroll, their investment in the community, and if the abatement is granted by the council, as Joe alluded to. This is actually a state form. The CF1 goes to the state, but Michael is supposed to, as a town manager, is supposed to sign off on it, I believe, right, Michael?
Yes, or whoever you designate.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We talked about this in the past, that this actually proves that they're doing the things that they promised to do when they got the tax abatement from the...
Right.
From the town council.
Right.
So hiring so many people, you know, et cetera, sales, building, all that.
All right. Thank you. Roll call. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman She.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
President, Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to another resolution. It's very similar. It's a resolution to Town of Maryville regarding waiver of non-compliance. This one is for a web Hyundai.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Yuzlak, for approval of Resolution 24-17. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing done. Mr. January.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. That motion carries. Moving on to Resolution 24-18, is a transfer of funds in the 2024 budget within the general fund. The decrease in general part-time bailiffs is $4,950. The increase going into general contractual services is $4,950. The net effect is zero.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, with a second by Mrs. Neal, for approval. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing no questions or comments. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Those funds will be transferred. Thank you, Joe. Mr. January?
Thanks, sir.
Moving on tonight to Resolution 24-19. It's a resolution in the Town of Maryville in agreement with the county of Lake County, Indiana, in undertaking community development activities. We call this the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's a annual resolution that we do to partner with the county to get funding coming back to Maryville.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of Resolution 24-19, partnering with Lake County, Indiana. January, thanks, sir. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. The resolution we added to the agenda was Resolution 24-20. It's a resolution authorizing a waiver of certain building fees, except for those associated with inspections, until such time as an ordinance can be considered for passage and adoption. Mr. Griffin, please give us a brief explanation of this one.
Mr. President, as you know, very often, Ms. Schein gets appeals from public entities, sometimes not public entities, to get some deference or discount for the fees that we used to actually operate the department. The Planning and Building Department is entirely financed from public monies, but not tax monies. It's entirely from fees generated in consequence of their regulatory function. However, the Maryville Conservancy District is a public entity, not under our control, but public, none the same. And they're doing some work that's gonna improve the 73rd Street, I believe, pump station and lift station, which will have a beneficial effect for the improvements to the fire station there, but also broader than that. It'll serve that area better. The council has informally said many times that they were willing to have a policy where they would waive some fees. The inspection fees are a direct cost. They directly contribute to the cost of the operation and that regulatory function. So until such time as that we can come back with a comprehensive ordinance that'll deal with all the requests we get from both the school town and other entities, this is our first step. And also, it will assist the office of, the Building Department, because it's the Planning and Building Department, because they would like to just have some guidance that they can rely on, that also the external auditors will find satisfactory. So we're recommending your favor for this. Doesn't mean we'll end with this. We'll be tasked with doing something, hopefully, before the end of the year, with the supervision of Mr. Svetinoff. Ms. Schein and I will get together, and we'll take a look at some recommendations that we think are for you. We won't write anything in any way that won't allow the council to be appealed to and do more, but we feel like the more that we can get you to fix a policy that you've decided, the better it'll be that we don't keep coming back to you, and then we can just take care of your policy on your behalf that you've set. And this is a first step. And this is timely, because they're in the middle of beginning construction. I think they've applied, and they have permits before Ms. Schein, and I don't want her to be any more anxious about this issue. If we can adopt this tonight, we would both be appreciative.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of Resolution 24-20. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
President, Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. That motion carries, Mr. Griffin.
I thank the council.
Moving on this evening to Board of Zoning Appeals and Large Gathering Actions. I'll call on Ms. Schein for presenting of the petitioners.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four petitions and one large gathering. Our large gathering is from St. Elijah's Serbian Orthodox Cathedral. It is, they're asking for approval for their large gathering permit for a church fundraiser. It's located at 8700 Tav Street. The event will be held Saturday, July 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Sunday, July 21st, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. The event is held to raise funds for the church. Approximately 200 to 250 are expected to attend daily. The event will be held solely outside as the hall will be closed. There will be 575 parking spaces available and accessible from a paved public streets. Drinking water will be available for all attendees, plus faucets and spigots. There will be four male toilet facilities and four female toilet facilities, which will be maintained by brew septic. There will also be three dumpsters and 10 to 12 trash containers on-site. Those will be maintained by Illinois, Illiana disposal. There will be no camping or overnight stays. The entertainment will be provided by three-member band. Alcohol will be served at this event. The petitioner has supplied the liquor and catering license, and security will be provided by Centurion Security Agency.
Ms. Schein, this is something that we approve every year, I believe, for...
Yes, it is.
St. Elijah, right?
Yes, their annual Serbian fest. Yes, sir, Mr. President.
So moved. Second. Is Mr. Dianovic here in the audience?
No, he worked, he, Mrs. Yuzlak, he works evenings, so he's not here.
Okay.
There's a motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, seconded by Councilor She.
Correct.
For approval. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first petitioner is Vernon Beatty. Would you please come to the podium, Mr. Beatty? Petitioner Vernon Beatty, owner, City Mall. Purpose to allow a church to be located at 5350 Broadway in a... in a C2 community commercial zoning district. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from 21-136 to allow church services to be held inside of City Mall at 5350 Broadway. God's Glory International Church is a non-denominational Bible-based Christian church founded in 2014 by the petitioner Vernon Beatty. Pastor Beatty has been active in the ministry for over 25 years, a former facilitator at the Salvation Army Adult Rehab Center for 20 years, a Bible study leader and a substance abuse class instructor. The petitioner currently has 12 to 15 active church members. During his time at the Salvation Army, the petitioner and his wife started a new start living, which provided houses for men that graduated from the center. Petitioner states that the special exception approval for his church will not interfere with other operations as that the location of the church will operate on Sundays only from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and Thursdays from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for Bible study. Approval of this special exception petition will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. The proposed special exception will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of the other business in the immediate vicinity for the purpose of already permitted. The use and value of the area of adjacent property only mentioned will not be affected by the adverse manner because petitioner is again only asking for special exception approval to hold church for four hours a week. For this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Counselors, is there a motion for approval?
I have a question.
I think Shawn is actually in this class.
Mr. Beatty, are you renting in the City Mall?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Okay, so there's no need for property exemption then?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
What space are you renting?
Well, as you face the City Mall, the larger portion of the building where that is, there's a separate outside entrance to the left of the doors that lead to the mall. So we have a separate entrance that leads into the mall area.
Used to be a little store there.
I believe so, yes.
Was that the shoe store?
Yes, it was, if I'm not mistaken.
Counselor See, are you familiar with this location?
I, I am. Is that the one that was, I think it was called Leona's Shoe Store?
I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, so that square footage is about?
It's about 1,000 square feet.
And so do you intend to have your membership grow or you're just going to stay actively?
Well, our intention is to, to grow, you know.
Will that be enough space for you with the 1,000 square feet?
I would imagine that as we grow, we would, you know, seek to find more space. But at this point in time, based on, you know, the amount of members that we do have, you know, the place is, you know, viable for us to use at this point.
All right. Thank you.
The last time I was in there, it seems like they had an air conditioning issue going on. Did they get that repaired?
That has been taken care of. Yes. We were at 4987 Arthur Street in Gary.
Was that in the home?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and now you have moved it permanently, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselors, is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
That was from you, Counselor.
Yes.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Congratulations, Vernon.
All right, thank you so much.
I have one comment. You said you were in a residence before.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm imagining that you were getting an exemption, real estate exemption?
Well, it's, it was actually out of my own home.
Yeah, well, you applied for a real estate exemption then, did you not?
No, I was not aware of.
Oh, you had no exemption for your church in the home?
No, I was, I am not aware.
Okay, just to make sure that you changed the address on your papers.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Shine.
Our second petitioner is Jennifer Kimble. Ms. Kimble is requesting special exception approval to have a fitness studio and a protein T-bar. Petitioner is requesting special exception approval in a C2 community commercial zoning district to allow a fitness studio, protein T-bar. Barbells will not, not only offer a full gym experience, but also group fitness classes, personal training, youth and young adult booth count, and a partnership with the local senior community. Petitioner is a licensed school principal with over 23 years of experience in the field of education. Her staff will include her son, who is an RN, and her mother, who is a retired teacher and consultant. Among others, barbell will be staffed with coaches who are trained professionally that practice safety and engage the best practices. The establishment of said business will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, and morals of the general welfare. The parking is adequate for this use. Additionally, there will be a public necessity for the proposed specialist exception and said that business will promote health and nutrition and awareness to the entire community. Barbells will be open from 4:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Some specially events and training may be scheduled outside these hours of operation. Petitioner was deferred on May 22nd and was approved at the following, at the next meeting. And this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
So did Sheila say a protein T-bar or just protein bar?
It's a protein, and then she told me today that she's going to be serving these teas, so I just added that.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for discussion.
I'll second their motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Pettit, the second by Mrs. Uselak, open for discussion.
Sheila, at the BZA, was there a discussion? And Jennifer, I have to ask you this. Our hours of operation in town, businesses can go 24/7, correct? It's our contractors that are 6:00 a.m. and it's the outside stuff that's 6:00 a.m.
Right, the noise ordinance.
The noise ordinance, so she'll be okay, unless somebody strains it back and screams in pain. Okay.
Let's not hope for that.
Is that legal to be opened at 4:00 a.m., Mr. Attorney? In town of Maryville?
Yes, if they choose to open at 4:00 a.m.
4:00 a.m.?
If they've got business, he's going to get up at 4:00 a.m., Margie.
Well, you have a lot of customers coming in so far at 4:00 a.m.?
No, we haven't.
Or will be?
Well, I hope so. We're hoping they will. That's earlier than the other gym, so it's a little bit earlier. Some people, like, they need that little extra hour. Most of them open at 5:00 a.m. So they need the extra hour to get ready for work.
I want to consider a coffee bar, too.
Yeah, exactly. I do have protein coffee shakes and they are really good.
Your expected annual income is around 220,000?
Yes.
Okay, so what do you charge each client?
For, so a yearly membership, if they pay per month, it could be $55.99 a month. That's including the gym, $55.99 a month. That includes the gym, plus the fitness classes. But they do get a discount for senior students, vets, first responders. They get a 25% discount as well. I also just signed up for the Trivity Health, so we'll take silver sneakers and different programs with the health insurance as well, too.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. January, roll call, please.
I'm just trying to add a question real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. I just wanted to ask, I mean, we heard what they said, but how do you specifically compare your fitness center to all the other fitness centers? Because we have so many fitness centers right now in Maryville. I know, I know. And that's one thing, the first thing that Ms. Shine actually told me when I first met with her. And one of the things that I say is that it's a different experience, and like I said, it's not just a focus on physical health. I really want to focus on youth and going all the way through the seniors as well. So it's about educating them as well. So really doing a lot of educating, a lot of different things about just your health and nutrition, mentally, emotionally, socially, and just teaching those same skills. So it's, and when you come in, like, I wish I should, could have shown you all pictures of how it looks. When you come in, it's a total different experience. Like, when you walk in, it doesn't look anything like a gym that you've ever been to. You walk in, it looks like an inviting experience. It's a different type of setting. And so just to bring all of those things, like I had as an educator, as a teacher and a principal, bringing those same experiences for those youth and, you know, just exposing them to that positive health experiences in it all. So I think that often, a lot of the other gyms, they are more like just, we're going to take a cycling class or we're going to just focus on one thing, but this is like focusing on the whole health of the entire community. I want to be more like a community partner versus just a center where people come and make money.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Ms. Kimble? Hearing no other comments. Mr. January, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favors, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Luck.
Mr. President, our next petitioner is not here this evening, but he had applied for a variance of use approval. Mr. Alan Watkins was the petitioner and the owner was Broadway Office Group. He was deferred on May 14, 2024, so that Chief Nusis could do some investigation. And after his investigation, Chief Nusis prepared the following letter dated June 7, 2024. Town Council Members and Sheila Shine. Subject recommendation regarding variance request for 7020 Broadway. I am writing to provide my recommendation concerning the variance request for the property located at 7020 Broadway. After careful consideration and assessment of pertinent factors, I advise against granting the request variance. Please feel free to contact me if you require further clarification or assistance regarding this matter. Thank you for your attention to this recommendation. Sincerely, Chief Colstis D. Nusis, Chief of Police.
Sheila, would you give us just a brief explanation of what this home was and what the plans were?
So the petitioner was seeking a variance of use approval to allow a residential facility with amenities on 0.93 acres in a C2 community zoning district. Petitioner wanted to locate this business at 7020 Broadway, Maryville. Petitioner would like to use the subject property as a residential facility similar to a motel, providing a fully furnished common area while renting bedrooms, providing amenities, and allowing long stays at affordable cost. Petitioner assigns one resident as a house lead and to co-manage along with the petitioner. Petitioner states that business will not change the nature of the community. Petitioner called this shared housing, co-living. It's not a group home. Petitioner has had two other locations running in Vapariso and one in Portage.
Thank you, Sheila.
Chief Nusis, what is your comment? I'm reading your letter here.
Just the setup of it, I don't think it would have been a good fit in our town at this time. I don't really want to go too far into detail with what I got in my findings, but I just didn't feel it was going to be a good fit for us. And I, I just opted to go against it based on that. I can get with you afterwards and I can let you know what it is, but some of my findings, but.
But at this present time, you are not recommending?
Correct. I'm not recommending it at this.
So would you say it was a, it was a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare of the town?
To the public safety, welfare of town and actual, and people of this town as well, yes.
Mr. President, to Sheila, this got approved five to zero by the BZA. Was there any remonstrators at the BZA public hearing? This would have been back in, what, April?
Yes, it was April 24th. No, it wasn't any remonstrators there.
No, okay. Joe, I guess, keep in mind to the new counselors, the deadline for our action is either tonight or in two weeks. If not, this goes into effect by the BZA approving it. So we've got to take an action tonight or in two weeks, right, Joe?
Right. So what you've had is you've had your top safety official state that it was going to be a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare of the town through his investigation. Additionally, from my review of their application, they've never established the strict application of the zoning ordinance will constitute a necessary hardship if, if applied to the property and the project. So you could say on two, on two separate grounds they fail. It's a public health, safety, and welfare risk to the public at large and the town, citizens of town of Maryville. Secondly, more importantly, they've not established, they've not established a hardship under the zoning ordinance. So if you wanted to go along with that tonight, I suggest put that encompassing that in your motion. So that we, when we deny, we deny with a purpose.
Leona, this is your side of Broadway, correct? You're on the west side of Broadway and I'm on the east side?
Yes, it is.
Have you gotten any calls?
No, I haven't.
No? Okay.
Well, if there is no other comment, I will make a motion to deny this, this development. This Broadway Office Group. Is Mr. Watkins here tonight?
No.
No. I thought you said that. Well, my motion stands.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, with a second by Counselor She, is that right? To deny this petitioner. Would you add to your motion, Mrs. Uselak, the statements that, because of the statements of Counselor?
You're incorporating my.
I will add to my statement whatever the counselor has said.
You're going to add to your motion and the advice from the counselor?
The advice from our counselor.
Counselor She, is your second stand with that?
Second.
Thank you. I believe a motion to deny, if this passes, Ms. Shine, it allows the, the business owner to get out of purchasing the property, is that correct?
Yes, yes, it does. He just needs, I'll send him a letter on letterhead that it was denied.
Okay. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, will be voting on the motion to deny this petitioner. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Just a quick question. We're voting to deny it.
Correct.
I would say aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. This motion and petitioner is denied. Ms. Shine.
Yes, sir.
Is there another petitioner?
Our last petitioner is OPS Living Maryville LLC, and the attorney is coming. And the attorney is coming. This is a, um, special exception approval in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District to allow a Behavior Health Treatment Center on 2.492 acres at 8253 Virginia Street. Currently, 8253 Virginia Street is an assisted living facility which is similar use to the proposed action requested. This facility is a commer, is a commercial location where there are similar businesses. If approved, said facility will offer inpatient drug and alcohol treatment, detoxification, and mental health. Notably, the Indiana Division of Mental Health and Addiction requires residential treatments in the state, which will, which was this center will be. They're designated as a Community Mental Health Center, Behavior Health Treatment Center. A provider shall within its designated service area provide treatments to include residential service, subacute stabilization facilities, and addiction treatment service. This community mental health will allow residents to stay from 30 days up to a year. However, one year cap may be extended if the director of the facility deems it appropriate. All such facilities must be licensed and accredited. The following is required to open a clinic. A site visit for licensure, assignment to an exclusive geographic service area, an application and proof of accreditation, and subsequent renewals. Staff shall include a CEO, a physician, licensed in the state of Indiana, mental health counselors, therapists, clinical nurse specialists, licensed psychiatrists, and clinicians. Upon approval of this special exception, petitioner does not propose expanding or, um, the existing footprint of the business, only changing what is offered. And it's for this petitioner only, this location only, for this use only. On June 11, Town Council deferred petition. So the Town Council deferred petition and Councilman Pettit, along with the attorney, along with, um, a neighboring, a business, um, and, um, the petitioner got together and they came up with a letter that I'm going to read into the record. It's kind of long, but, uh, Dear Town of Maryville Council, we would like this letter to serve as an open communication tool to the board and its constituents regarding our recent and upcoming land use special exception case. To provide a brief overview of our recent hearing and process, we are in petitioner, we are the petitioner for the property located at 8253 Virginia Street, Maryville, Indiana. Our goal is to obtain approval from the Town Council to operate as a state licensed residential treatment facility, regulated and licensed with the Indiana Division of Mental Health and Addiction. Residential treatment is a live-in healthcare service for people who struggle with substance abuse. They are staffed with highly trained professionals who provide around-the-clock care and guidance. The goal is to help residents overcome the challenge, challenges, and develop healthy coping skills. Common types of therapies you can receive as a part of a residential treatment include cognitive behavioral therapy, group therapy, and individual therapy. These therapies are part of a typical day at an inpatient recovery centers. Scheduled activities such as meals, therapy sessions, group meetings, and leisure time are also common. Throughout the special exception process and the public hearing, there has been a great progress and receptiveness expressed by the board. However, there was a one-year process contingency that had halted our progress because there was likelihood of an exception being revoked after one year. The open-ended nature of the stipulation has made it impossible to secure financing for the multimillion-dollar investment in this location and continue to pursue opening a business in a new location. Instead of fighting this stipulation, we want to offer a concrete resolution. The motivation behind replacing the one-year review is to have a more transparent relationship between Town Hall, Harsha Recovery Center, and the surrounding business at the subject facility in which we are pursuing this approval. Harsha would like to ask the board at its decision-making, remove the one-year process and replace it with the contingencies listed below if approved, which may be go beyond one year. Harsha Recovery Center's quarterly update report shall be addressed and delivered to the Town Council of Maryville as well as identified adjacent businesses by the second day of each quarter, which will include items listed below. Ongoing neighbor relationships and any addressing issues related to the operations of the location. Measures and policies that are implemented to minimize neighboring businesses owner disputes, and any complaints made toward our business that we are made aware of and how we plan to address those concerns, which may include staffing, employee metrics, additional policies and procedures, and review of any economic impact to the town and general client outcomes. We believe that a self-governing solution and transparent relationship with the town and neighboring businesses owners will be a positive solution to all parties. In review of all incidents resulting in discussion with the town and neighboring businesses that result in determination and installation of fencing in the areas of the property may resolve concerns of the town and neighboring business. Harsha will agree to install fencing following a, a staff review of the appropriate size, location, and placement details. This will also include any amendments and modifications to the policy from item two that would overlap with the goals of installing a fence in the future if necessary. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve, uh, what's our number here, Sheila? The special exception for OPS Living Maryville. I don't have the case number. Thank you, what Sheila said, along with the, the three conditions that were laid out in the letter. Mr. President.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, but I do have a question.
Open for discussion, second by Mrs. Yuzlak, go ahead.
Thank you. Are you distributing any type of drugs to these drug-addicted, uh, people?
Well, I think that there might be some programs of the treatment regimen where they would have actual pharmaceuticals, but that would be governed by, that's why they have to be staffed by doctors and it's monitored and state licensed. But the primary treatment is for the addiction recovery. And a lot of those, I mean, without getting into a specific case, don't actually involve the use of other drugs. But there will be pharmaceuticals, yes.
There will be what?
There will be drugs.
There will be drugs.
Yes, if necessary.
What type of drugs are they?
I'm not the doctor, I couldn't tell you. But I mean, but, you know, as, as an example, if somebody is a significant user and is having withdrawal symptoms, there are certain medications that they're given to help them through that withdrawal process, and they are scheduled drugs. But that is why it's state licensed, that's why you have to have a medical doctor on staff, that's why they have to have the, the RNs and everybody else that are under those minimum state requirements. And that's why they have to have the inspection. So it's a very heavily, heavily regulated, uh, type of use.
So you do keep a doctor on staff?
They're required by law to have one, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, too, um, because it's the Harsha Recovery Center of Maryville LLC, which is that transitional entity from assisted living, because we're not closing the assisted living, we're transitioning everybody out, and all the staff that's there would qualify to be in positions for that transition, which we said maybe six months, eight months. That operator is gonna end up being the final actual operator at that location, just for clarity.
Mr. President, I want to, um, thank Adam for drafting the letter. He and I have been on the phone a couple of different times. Uh, he was also kind enough to pass it on to Innovations and Learning. Uh, they have blessed the letter and the content. Uh, I think the caveat in there, Adam, about the fence and about sharing that report with White Lodging and Innovations and Learning, um, those were the ones that seemed to be the most concerned about it. So I want to thank you for, and, and your client for doing that.
I think that they understood the concern, and it actually, I think, what they proposed gets, gets more proactive and actually gives you more than even just a one-year review period. And if there is a situation that's minor, we can nip it in the butt, which, based on their history at their other four facilities in the state, they have a great track record.
Yep.
It's a great example of us raising concerns and then you as a petitioner making some changes to accommodate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I reiterate what Mr. Pettit said, Adam. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I have one. In reference to, um, behavioral centers, we do have a behavioral center here in the town of Maryville, which is regional mental health. How would you? And their beds are not filled. So how does this play in with that?
I, I don't want to misspeak, I don't know what regional's business model is. But I know that the reason why Harsham looked at this location is because there is a need up here, and it might be because of the limitations on what programs they do offer, um, at that location. It, it's similar to the assisted living. We've got numerous assisted living facilities in the town that some of them are making it, some of them are not. And it just depends on what their program is from a scheduling standpoint. I mean, all of them are regulated, but they're not required necessarily to provide all the services. This, um, operator that's gonna be in this transition phase, they, they have a, a new facility opened up in Indianapolis that's specific to children with autism on all spectrums. It's successful. They have another dedicated cross-discipline hospital, which gets into behavioral health in addition to regular services. And then they have another behavioral health center, which is the one that's in Terre Haute, their primary. So I mean, this is their area concentration. They have a need here, and I know from talking with them and just from my own personal experiences and dealing with issues over in Porter County, Porter Stark Services, I mean, you're gonna be getting folks that are actually coming even from outside of the immediate area of Maryville that really need this at this location, just from a regional standpoint. So you're, you're gonna help out a lot more people than just, there's residents of Maryville.
I know I, I asked this question last time, um, but I didn't, um, know if you went back and talked to anyone. But like, as far as a judge sentencing someone to your facility, would that be allowed at this facility?
It, it, yes, it can be. And, and some of their, uh, folks can be court ordered to be there. It's still a voluntary program. So if they run ish, into issues with an individual like that that is not following that program, they will be removed.
So then it wouldn't be, okay, so they would be removed and placed into custody, or they would be just kicked out of your program?
Depending on the circumstances, and Chief Craig backed me up on this. If, if they are an issue from a safety standpoint, they're just for the operator, let alone if they were to be let out, that phone call's probably gonna go into PD. And again, that might be a situation where we come up with a policy if we have a scenario like that that presents itself. But from their other facility with where they have the same, uh, format, they haven't had that issue. I mean, I'm saying that they never could, but Chief might be able to speak to that. I mean, if the policy is, hey, we might be having an issue, they're gonna call as a proactive measure. Police can come out and decide, is this person, once they leave there, going to be a problem? That does not pose a issue that we've been working with crafting these conditions for the surrounding businesses.
I can.
Are you affiliated with any other health center, Lake County or Porter County?
My office or the, the petitioner?
Treatment center.
They are not, they are, they are privately owned, they are their own entity.
What about your office?
My office, Sworn Law PC? I'm, I'm a one-man band.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anything else on the counselors?
Could I?
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. Could I, uh, just ask a question on this?
Yes, Chief.
If this does go through, um, I think it would be excellent for all of us to get together and come up with some type of a policy or a plan.
Sure.
So we do, because, uh, these are something new that we are dealing with, and there are some other ones that we've had issues. There's others that are on board with it, you know, we've talked to them, we've come up with an action plan. I think that would be the most beneficial thing for us.
And, and I know we didn't get into like specific examples in this, but that, item two contemplates that, and we made that offer both here and before the BZA to, you know, again, be proactive. Because we don't, they don't want those issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, at the other locations of, of this street, this center, you have never had any issues where, um, a person has had issues with drugs or whatnot and ended up being able to, needed to be removed from the facility?
They have not. They have had folks that have not followed the program that have been cut out of the facility because they're not honoring the terms. A lot of the folks that come in here, if they're not court ordered, it's voluntary. So they're agreeing to come in for this treatment, and if you're not gonna follow that treatment regimen, there's no point in you being there because now they're taking up space for somebody that needs it, and that's not what they're there to cater to. They, they don't want to enable that problem. And their other facilities, um, I can't remember if, if we got into this before the BZA or if it was also Town Council. I mean, some of their other facilities are in residential areas, and they still don't have the issues. That was kind of the big concern with being in this location. And the reason why this location makes a lot of sense is we don't have any residences, residents immediately around us.
Anything else, counselors? Hearing nothing else, Mr. January, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
No.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
No.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
Council, President Bella.
Aye.
Four in favor, three against.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Luck.
Motion carries. Is there any old business before us tonight?
Mr. President, I'd like to bring up something, um, just as an FYI, um, to Lisa and Steve. Guys, we need to get together with Mike Neal, and we need to make a site visit to the Mo's building. And, and get a list of what the repairs need to be. We need to paint that thing and get that thing spruced up. It looks terrible from Broadway. Uh, I know Mike and his guys are working out of there, but we need to, we need to figure out exactly what it is, a laundry list of things we need to do to that building. So Steve, I'm gonna start with you to coordinate, and we'll pick a time to go down there one day, like 11 o'clock or noon, and go through that building, okay? And I'll call Mike, too.
Which building?
The Mo's Building on Broadway, on the west side of Broadway. That blue and yellow that had the 150,000 cars parked there that
Oh, okay.
Joe got rid of.
All right. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's our property now, and we need to do something with it.
So what do you anticipate?
I don't know, I was thinking maybe a pink like Leona's got on would look good on that building. What do you think? It needs to be painted.
Yes, it does.
So we gotta look inside and, I don't know what Mike's found in there, Rhonda, if, you know, probably scary things, but, uh,
Probably a bunch of.
It's what?
It's rough.
It's rough?
Yeah. Is that rock?
Yeah, so.
Counselors, let's, let's move on, thank you.
That's all I have under old business.
Thank you, I have no new business tonight. A public comment, I was asked to remind everyone, it's, it's not, um, questions and answers. So if you ask a question, we're not gonna respond. So if you want to talk to us, you can wait till after the meeting, and all of us will be happy to speak with you about a direct question you might have. It's really just for a public comment. So please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we allow, uh, three minutes for that.
Hi, I'm Jerian Collins, 2505 West 65th Avenue. I just wanted to be sure to mention to Summers Leaving, to keep the splash pad for next year for our kids, please. I rode past, um, Hammond, and, uh, on July 3rd, and their park was full with the splash pad, the, um, the skateboard park, the swings. They have a vibrant park system. So if we want some help, I, I'm not a McDermott fan at all, personally, but they have done an outstanding job with their parks. So maybe if we want to see, you know, collaborate or talk to them and see what they've done, collaboration is always good, so I want to say that, number one. Number two, I'm very pleased about Superintendent Suggs being the new superintendent for the Maryville Community School Corporation. I do hope, I'm, I'm glad because there's been a lot of turnover in school districts around our area, and he having been in the assistant superintendent job for five years, he's been in this, um, in these meetings, and he is a supporter of keeping the court open for the truancy court. But I am just delighted, he is the first black, or I should say African-American superintendent for the town of Maryville, which our school district. the town of Maryville, which our school district is 60% black, I'm, I'm glad that we do have diversity still, but I am just very pleased about that, and I do hope that the town and the school district will work closer together. A lot of, uh, town, uh, meetings that I hear and listen to, you hear a lot of talk about what's going on with the school district, and what's going on with the town, because a vibrant school district is essential to having growth and stability with the town, so I do hope that'll happen. And then, thirdly, um, the sesquicetin-
Semi.
Semi sesquicetinial-
Ah, see, it's not so easy.
SSS.
Semi quincetinial.
Whatever, and I speak well. Um, Indiana is in the di, bottom five of civic engagement and voter turnout, it is a problem, it is not a problem with just black people, it is a problem overall, across the state, and so I like your approach for looking at different elements that can be incorporated into increasing civic pride. Um, I would like to participate if you want, uh, a volunteer, um, I would love to participate, um, because we have a problem, and so, um, if we can get people, um, if we can teach and engage, because we know that this is not a perfect union, but we're working towards that, and, um, everyone here has a part and has, um, some belonging in that, and so, um, I would like to participate, and maybe if you sought other, um, people, maybe a couple of people from the Interfaith Council, um, who are Maryville residents, I, I don't know how you want to do it, but-
Ms. Collins, finish up, please.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Will Akins, 34 Indian Trail, um, I'm here on behalf of Maryville Pop Warner. Um, we were removed from the parade this year, you guys are not going to answer many questions, but I feel that it was a personal attack on me, I wanted to let the public know, I was a pub, uh, employee, I was released from the town, which is fine, I have no beef.
Please, no discussion of any personnel matters at the microphone.
And, uh, I was, um, removed as the pres, I was the pres, I am the president of the Maryville, Maryville Pop Warner, the organization was removed, and I feel it was a personal attack, because my fiance was removed as well. On the day of the parade, all of a sudden, Maryville Pop Warner is back on the list. I have the, the first list that came out, where we weren't there, and then the day of the parade, we're there. You guys are not going to answer any questions, I have several parents here who are concerned because their children was hurt by not being allowed to participate. I never received an email, I never received a phone call stating that we were put back on the list. I believe that's unfair to the children. I'm here to speak on behalf of the children, I'm not speaking on my behalf, I'm speaking on behalf of the children, and I have several other parents that may want to speak. Um, I spoke to Mr. Brian, I don't know if that was his first name, he told me he was going to email me, never heard anything. So, again, I'm here to speak on behalf of the children, and hopefully, moving forward, um, we won't have any other issues, because the Pop Warner organization represents Maryville. We love to be in the town of Maryville, and so, moving forward, I would hope that we don't have any other issues, uh, with any other town functions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am, I really do not know how the whole process goes, my name is Melissa Smith, I am also here to speak on behalf of Pop Warner, as a parent and a coach. I have children who are very disheartened. Maryville is one of the few cities that really don't start athletes, like in elementary, like other schools, so for some of us, including myself, this is what my children have. That's one of the highlights of their year, is that parade. I have five that I pay for, that I coach, and the very first thing, yes, we are Pop Warner, but before we were Pop Warner, we are Maryville Pop Warner. So, for our children, our parents, we all volunteer, we are not paid for this. For us to not be able to be represented, we watched the whole parade, my children attend, the schools from elementary to the high school. I will always be a pirate, as you can see, but it, it, it hurts, um, not only the, the children, it hurt the parents. I don't know how involved the city is with Pop Warner, um, but I feel like there's a very, very, very small support from the city, as far as I know. I've n, I have not heard of anyone from the city coming to a game, hearing about a game, I will say I've been in Pop Warner for about five years. When I first started, there were police officers there, there were ambulance there, um, and now we have kind of faded to nothing. I am a nurse by trade, I'm on the field, I do volunteer, there's so many babies that break down, asthma, heat exertion, and it's me, I don't know if anyone would be willing to volunteer, if, if it's a, a cost that we need to pay you, because we are literally paying everything from our uniforms, it, it, it kind of, our rivalry is Gary, who are now the Kruegers, and it was amazing how they were able to go from the Steelers to the Kruegers and have all of their gear within one year, and we're still sitting here, trying to borrow helmets, trying to get our cheer uniforms. Every other team outshines us, and we still hold our heads up high, as a pirate, from age four, all the way up. I would like for it to be continued that way, but I would really like for you to take into consideration how that made the children feel, how the parents feel, no support, and that's since you guys are not answering any questions, I don't even know if, if you do support, if you're willing to support, but just know that when we wear our pirate gear, and we, we are Maryville Pop Warner, we want to know that we're Maryville Pop Warner, we are within our own Pop Warner, but I feel like Maryville is just, mm, yeah-
Finish up, ma'am, please.
We've got a team.
Finish up, please.
Okay.
Time wise, yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to say that, that, that ha, I didn't know that happened, and Will, and everyone that's here, that's absolutely horrible, I believe, I'm not a council person, but I know Rhonda's about to say something, she comes from a football family, I played football, that's absolutely horrible, we can't ever allow that to happen again.
Ms. Neal, excuse me.
So, I would like to address, before you do borrow a helmet, I'm sorry, um, I am over the committee for the Fourth of July, so I will accept responsibility for the Maryville Pop Warner team and the cheerleaders not participating in the parade. Once I was informed that there was an issue going on, I immediately jumped on it to resolve it to the best of my ability, I reached out to Will, um, I did apologize, I don't know what happened, how they were left off, I immediately went to my, uh, my committee, what's going on, how did they get left off, and we thought, the last, my last word was that it was taken care of, and you guys were participating, and I was looking for you guys on the Fourth of July, so I will take responsibility for you guys, uh, the incident that happened, whatever that may be, I still have to dig down to the bottom of it, because I am over, excuse me, I am over that committee, and, um, like I said, by the time I got wind of what was going on, um, I did the best to my ability to resolve it. We do support the Maryville Pop Warner, so, um, why they were left out, I don't know, and also Will's wife, why she, why she was left out also, she has been a great contributor to all of our events, every single one of our events, and we would hate to have, to lose her, and even to lose a relationship with Maryville Pop Warner. So, yes, I will acknowledge that something did happen, I don't know, you guys were not left out by my hand or on purpose, I do heavily apologize from, from the town of Maryville that that did happen. You will be invited to participate in everything else, our trunk or treat, our Christmas, um, event, the Fourth of July next year, so please don't hold this against us, and not participate when invited again.
Thank you, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Brian Musarch, 201 E 68th Place, um, I was the coordinator for the parade, um, I talked to Will on the phone several days ahead of time, I apologized that there was some miscommunication as to whether or not they were going to be involved, I asked him and the Pop Warner cheer, if it was a separate group, or two, or, or combined, I established that, they had a place, we were waiting for them to participate, whether they did or not, um, was their own choice, they did not show up to the parade, but I did talk to them on the phone, I took personal responsibility, even though I have no idea what the employment relationship was, I, it was just a, a, a name on a list for me, I, there was nothing personal for it at all, I, I can't comment on that, but I do know that I did talk to them on the phone, and they were invited, and they did have a place, so, um, I'm sorry that this happened, and you're absolutely correct, that it cheated the children, one way or the other, it didn't work out, and, um, that's terrible for them, and we need to do better to make that happen. Um, hopefully, moving forward, it will be better. Um, but I can't let, um, Ms. Neal take the total responsibility, because I was, um, also at hand in that, I thought the issue was resolved, and maybe I didn't do that well enough. Um, moving on, um, I do, I would like to point out a little thing about, uh, our tax abatements, if we are given tax abatements and companies are not, um, so concerned as to even fill out the paperwork, maybe we should charge them a fee of some sort, a little slap on the wrist, maybe not take away their tax payment, but maybe we should collect a little something to help them remember, maybe next year, get your paperwork in on time. I, I don't think that there's any, um, problem with that. Um, I'd like to thank you, Chief, because that, a facility at 7020 Broadway, uh, none of the neighbors wanted that, so appreciate the backup on that. And a final reminder, I would like to bring up the Old Mill Pizzeria property, if we could get that to the fire guys, so that they could have their, uh, memorial there, um, uh, I know that, uh, we're not supposed to have Q and A, but it would be nice if we could get a progress report as to the status of that, it shouldn't be that big of a problem, Quick Clean D should take care of that fairly quickly, thank you.
Mr. President, I, I, I have to comment with the, the one lady that came up from Pop Warner, I just want the parents to realize, you know, Wise Family Field cost the town of Maryville, and I'm happy to do it, and I'd do it again seven times and twice on Sunday, that field was $750,000, and the press box and concession stand was another hundred and seven, $750,000, that's 1.5 million dollars that the town earmarked for Pop Warner and Maryville Youth Soccer, so, we have in fact made a very large contribution to the Pop Warner organization in this town, we are very committed to Pop Warner in this town, and I think all the kids benefit from that beautiful facility, so much so that we've hosted regional and sectionals, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, so, there has been a commitment by this town over the years to support Pop Warner.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, my name's Christine McGee, um, I'm a resident of Maryville, um, I too have two boys, um, one of my boys gra, just graduated from Maryville High School, came up through Pop Warner, um, and I have an 11-year-old that plays on the team now. Um, to hear, or to find out that the children were not able to participate in the parade was disheartening, very disheartening. Um, as a parent, me and my husband and I support Maryville Pop Warner, and have done it for many years, um, I know that, and it's great that you guys are taking accountability for it now, but it's a little too late right now, because the boys missed, the, the cheer team missed that opportunity to participate, even to the point that some of the kids, um, are still talking about it to, with, just within the last hour, um, about the fact that they did not, were not able to participate, so hopefully, this does not happen again, um, and, you know, the people that are responsible for taking accountability for these things can make sure that that doesn't happen again, um, so, but thank you guys for taking some accountability for it, just hopefully it doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Shonda Flowers, 6137 Connecticut Street, Maryville, um, I wanted to add to the Pop Warner stuff, so let me just say, I don't want, uh, Councilwoman Neal to be thrown under the bus, I will say this directly to the parents, I came through Maryville, my kids came through Pop Warner, I am a Maryville pirate, just like I am a West Side Cougar.
All right.
But let me just say this, in those meetings, because I was too participant and part of those committees, it was a miscommunication.
It was.
Let me say that.
It was.
It happens, and I, and I apologize, because at the end of the day, I personally know Will, I know his kids, I know his family, and one thing I know about, um, Mr. Akins is that he loves those kids, and he would have never, um, been in a situation, regardless of whatever the work ish, issue is, would have allowed or not allowed for those kids to participate, those were some of the conversations that we did have, we knew that they definitely, um, would have been there, and besides his personal issues, that he still represents Pop Warner to its fullest. It really was a miscommunication on what came out of that meeting, as to what was communicated, but when they did have tried to right the wrong, the communication, from my understanding, and I spoke with Will, was that they were leaving, and his wife was going out of town, and she had canceled, um, the float, from my understanding, and so, as a result of that, the timing just didn't work out, where they can then re, um, to come back on, um, and participate in the parade on you all's side. I do know that once it was discovered, that they were added back to the list in hopes that it would work itself out with the miscommunication, so I'm personally going to say I apologize, that we knew that you all, and you all will continue to represent this town, I am a person who was from, and was a participant, and sat in the same seats, and still wear those T-shirts to this day, so it really was just a miscommunication, it was not purposely done, I apologize, they did try to right the wrong by calling and contacting them, and trying to get you guys to come back to participate, as to how it didn't fold out, I hate that it didn't, but please note that as a, a person who lives here, and a person who works for the town, Maryville Pirates and the Pop Warner means everything to me and my family, my son went to college on scholarships, and we speak at those tournaments, so we know how important it is to our community, and we don't have a lot of activities for our kids, but this one, we do support, we are glad that you came to speak that, and hopefully we can figure out a way to remit that, so those kids know, you as parents know, but we want the kids to know that they were not purposely left out, that's all I wanted to say. Oh, and, um, still waiting on that long jet. Thank you. Excuse me, um, I just want to say that, again, we have all taken accountability for those, um, for this miscommunication, because indeed it was that, um, we do want to make sure that it never happens again, President, uh, Vice President Neal, um, is over that committee, but we also sit on the committee as well, um, we did reach out when we found out immediately, which was two days prior to the parade, not the day before, so we feel like, we begged, we said, please let the children be a part of the parade, um, that was what, that was the phone calls that we made, and so, it, it disheartened us to look up and see that they did not still walk in the parade, even though the float was canceled, we thought that they could still walk the parade, so I don't know if you all as a, as a whole decided, no, we're not going to do it, but we did ask and say, please, don't let the children suffer and not be a part of this parade.
Moving on to announcements tonight, our next town council meeting is Tuesday, July 23rd at 6:30, the RDC meeting is July 23rd at 6:15, and our job fair is July 24th from 11:30 to 2:30 at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center.
All should do adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.